No ballgame to interrupt us tonight. No ballgame to interrupt us tonight.
No, you're lucky.
All right, I've got six fifty-nine, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'm gonna ask David Banks if he would lead us a prayer, and I will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Y'all please stand and look your head here.
Our Father in Heaven, holy and almighty and gracious and wonderful, we're grateful to you, Father, for a wonderful day that you've given to us, and we pray, Father, that as we have acted in our various capacities, that we've done so honorably and respectfully and to your glory. Father, we come together this evening to engage in business, the business of this city. We pray, Father, that you will guide the decisions that are made, as you guide the hearts that make those decisions. And, Father, we'll pray for every man and woman that is here this evening, that is elected official that is here to work together, we pray that we all can work together to make these things work. I pray, Father, for Sandra and for James, for Gary, and Evan, and Larry, and our mayor, Jim, Jim Pritchard, we pray, Father, that you be with these, particularly this evening, that they will work together and make decisions that bring this city closer to you. Father, we are grateful for every employee of this city, grateful, Father, that you have put all of these people together in a way that is beneficial to all of us. We pray, Father, that as we conduct ourselves, we will do so, all of us, in a manner that is in unity and cooperation, and again, to your glory. My Father, we thank you for these blessings, we thank you for this time that we have to be together, and we pray, Father, that you'll guide us in this today, we pray this in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Dad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Sandra Kilpatrick. Larry Blasen gang. James McGee.
Here.
Evan Becker.
Yes.
Gary Carey.
Here.
We have a quorum established. You have in your packets minutes of the meeting on May the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Get you to look over those, if there's any corrections, additions, or provisions, and if not, then we will approve them.
Make a motion to approve this, present.
Have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're down to new business, first order of business. As I entertain a motion to bring Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eight to the table.
Seven.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yeah.
Evan Becker.
Yes.
Gary Carey.
Yes.
We do this particular resolution periodically, it's when the actuary meets with the retired firemen, and they look at the actuarial tables and see if they're able for a raise, and this time, Rhonda, was it fifty dollars? I can't recall.
They're requesting seventy-five.
Okay, but anyway, we have to have a, the money was there actuarily to approve, and we have to, the city has to pass this particular resolution to do that, and I'll leave it for any discussion and...
We pretty much do this every year.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-five F eight.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yeah.
Evan Becker.
Yes.
Gary Carey.
Yes.
I entertain a motion to bring Resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine to the table.
So move.
Roll call.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yeah.
Evan Becker.
Yes.
Gary Carey.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine is a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant to secure additional funding for the police facilities project. There's a grant out there under the Arkansas Community Assistance Grant Program that we just became aware of. Matter of fact, I think your wife saw it, she was working on something for the library about it, and this is for a one point five million dollar grant proposal, and this is just authorizing me to sign the documents that Captain Wright actually does all the work, and I just signed the papers. But if there's any questions, I think Captain Wright can probably answer them better than I can. But it's just authorizing me, authorizing me to sign on behalf of the city to apply for this grant, which that got prepared, haven't you?
We're waiting on some information from the architect, so it looks like it'll be probably, at least a couple of weeks, and we had a meeting with him this morning.
And this grant specifically for the new police department?
Correct. We just became aware of it after we got in the process, I think, so this would just be an additional money that we could have. We'll probably discuss later about the project itself, and obviously, we wanted this, and we're coming down to this, and this million five would allow us to do some other things that we would like to have but can't afford.
Any requirements, like matching requirements or anything like that?
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent match.
But you can do in kind as well.
Okay. So where, let me ask, because of the in kind portion of it, where does that come from? Have we narrowed that down, just?
Well, we've already got the four million dollar bond.
Yeah.
So we would be using that as our matching.
Okay, okay.
One point five million, if we were awarded.
Yeah, if you're awarded a, are we able, just to make sure, we're able to leverage that money in the bond for in kind?
Yes, we can't, we can't use anything that we were gonna do with that, if that makes sense. So we have the project, and I have this in my report that I was gonna talk about, but... So we put together, the architects put together a proposal for us for the project of everything they think we need and everything we want for the next ten to twelve years. So we're way up here, and we have this amount of money, so...
Is that where the A and B projects were coming into play?
Yes.
Like the, this rendition or this rendition of it ended on?
Yep, and so by cutting the things we cut, if we get this grant, then we would be able to add some of those things back.
Okay. But the twenty percent from on, we can use that for matching on this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
And no other requirements outside of that twenty percent that you're aware of?
I mean, just other than it's gotta be spent, you know, by the county manager, stuff like that?
Okay. I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, second, all in favor say aye, roll call, excuse me.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yeah.
Evan Becker.
Yes.
Gary Carey.
Yes.
Entertaining motion to bring ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six to the table.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Sandra Kilpatrick. Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yeah.
Evan Becker.
Yes.
Gary Carey.
Yes.
Entertaining motion to spend the reading rules and read by number and title only one time.
Is that for the emergency clause?
No, it's merge clauses, isn't it?
I don't know. So move.
Second, roll call.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yeah.
Evan Becker.
Yes.
Gary Carey.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six is an ordinance regulating the keeping of animals within the city of Alma, repealing conflicting ordinances, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. As y'all are very aware, it's increasingly difficult, increasingly problems with animal control in every city. Unfortunately, in Saline County, a thirteen-year-old girl got mauled and killed by a pack of animals that she was helping to take care of. In this past week, another lady got attacked by a pit bull. They had a city council, an open forum, and the judge says, y'all voted not to allow us to have animal control shelters, so this is some of, it is a serious, serious problem. And I'll let Cody speak to it, he and his department and city attorney came up with this. This is not the best resolution in the world, it's a get started resolution.
Yeah, that's basically, it's what Sean provided that he's done for other communities with no licenses, because we didn't feel like giving licenses, best use of money in the sense of, I don't know anybody who gets our current dog licenses, and I don't do anything for you either, so... But on top of that, this does reveal a lot of outdated stuff and update necessary information that we need. I know it's not the most perfect ordinance, but we do need something that we're not working off of from the ninety.
We get, I'm not gonna quote a number, I think we have a pit bull down, correct, or did we? I probably picked one up last night at the shooting at the motel, I could be wrong.
Belgian Malinois.
Pardon?
It was like a German Shepherd or Belgian Malinois.
Okay.
Me, Sean, Jeff, and Brett all looked at it as well to try to edit, and do whatever is best for the community and the city.
But please, any input you have is more than welcome. We've just gotta get a grasp of something that we can get started with, to have, not a pun intended, but to have some teeth in it, that we can do something with these people. And we had one in court this past Monday, and she got fined sixty-five dollars or some such number, I can't recall. It's a serious problem, in the county and in the city, in every city.
Cody does this, there was a gentleman, I guess, almost two years ago, probably at this point, I have to look at my notes for the reviews, that came and talked about cats running at large, etc. like that.
We just don't have anything to deal with cats, really. We have nowhere to put them, and...
But, so this doesn't really impact?
Absolutely. I think there's some language where it says, you know, we're not responding.
This will be a living document for sure, I mean, it will be updated and changed, because we really don't know what to do.
I think it does kinda hold people that feed the cats more liable, though, because it states, if you're basically, you're caring for that animal, you have responsibility to that animal.
Yeah, having control.
Control.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're feeding them, you're having control, and...
I think I told the story when I was running for office, we were knocking on doors, and we'd just about wound up in this apartments across the street from Walmart down there, and I said, Beth, I'm tired, I'm going home, I'm not, she said, no, we're gonna knock on these five doors. And so we went to this one door, knocked on it, there was about, there's several people living there, and this little girl came to go, and I said, is your mom here? And she said, yeah, and she came out, and I said, ma'am, I'm Jim Pritchard, I'm running for mayor, is anything you need, yeah. She said, do something with these damn cats. And I noticed outside the door, there was a bowl there, and I said, what is that for? She said, well, you don't want me to let them starve to death, do you? So it kind of, I said, well, you probably should be feeding them if you're willing to. I apologize for that, I never meant to get that.
Guess we didn't wanna nip it to death, otherwise nothing would ever get passed, and we'll still be talking about it ten years later.
Any input, any questions?
So this mayor, this is the ordinance that Sean drafted, is that correct?
Correct.
I was about to say, he put in the last edits, you know, for what you have now with his final edits.
Okay. And he also mentioned, as y'all know, that he said, this is an issue everywhere that I'm aware of. It's really, it's really a major issue, it's expensive, and the animals have a lot of rights, and we had a couple of dogs for two, for three months, and we had to pay overtime to Brett, he had to feed them twice a day, seven days a week, and I mean, it's really, it's a tough issue. And I certainly don't have the answers to it, but we've gotta start doing something, as Rhonda said, holding people more accountable.
All right, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five F six.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasen gang.
Yes.
James McGee. Evan Becker.
Yes.
Gary Carey.
Yes.
About two or three months ago, Chief Pointer came before the council with a proposal to increase compensation for our police department, brought comparisons from, comparisons from all the surrounding cities of the state, and it was more than we could do. We've talked about it with the council two or three different times. We're coming tonight with a proposal that has some concessions in it from all parties we need to discuss. One of the hardest things I've dealt with, not just in being a mayor, but in doing a, in my career, we can't afford to do it, we can't afford not to do it, and I know that's a strong statement. I talked to the mayor of Ozark yesterday, and she said, we had to raise every policeman five thousand dollars, and we can't afford to, but I understand what you're saying, because we can't lose them. If we lose them, we don't just lose experience, we have such a difficult time replacing them. And it cost the city of Alma, if we hired, if we lost an employee, an officer, I mean, patrol officer, and we hired a non-certified, we'd have to send him or her seventeen weeks at the academy for twelve thousand dollars, twelve weeks of field training for eighty-six hundred dollars, and then about, a total of about twenty-six thousand dollars, and it's about four months before we can put them on patrol and do it. So, like in your, all of your businesses, to replace an employee is really, really hard, just to tell you, I was visiting James the other day about something else, and he was trying to, everybody's trying to hire people, Evan, I'm sure deals with that daily. It does not guarantee that we will not lose an employee. The proposal basically gets us up to the part that Jeff talked about, the start and pay equal to Van Buren, we can't compete with state police, we can't compete with Northwest Arkansas, we gotta compete with Van Buren, we gotta compete with the sheriff's department, and even Ozark today is paying more starting than we are, and that really surprised me, I was not aware of that. But these, and this proposal, and I'll talk a little bit about it, and you'll have a lot of questions, we have, okay, the bottom line is, and we'll get to that in a minute, to get from July one, or the first pay period in July, to December thirty-one, with those increases, is sixty-eight thousand to thirty-five, as you can see on the sheet here in front of you. How can we pay for that? Well, fortunately for that, we can. If you'll recall, when we had the bond refunds, we gave, and my numbers will not be correct, we had, we gave money to the fire department to remodel their stations, we gave money to the police department to pay for, it was either cameras or vests, or what was it, Jeff? I can't recall. Maybe both.
Range upgrades and...
Yeah, but you, there was, you know, those categories, we gave them and them, and there was seventy-four thousand, seventy-three thousand or seventy-four thousand left over, that's not, this is not the money we put in the rainy day fund or anything like that, with the IT fund. These were monies that we had to use back in certain areas, and we can't use it for salaries. But, now this is with Sean, the police department bought two police cars this year, we can take seven, sixty-eight thousand, two thirty-five, or seventy thousand dollars, and pay that onto the cars, and free that up to pay for these salaries to the end of the year and the benefits. We have to amend the budget, but that's not that big a deal, but it's legal, it's done. As a matter of fact, I think we've done it in here once since I've been here, had to do with police cars, I think, but I could be wrong about that, might have been something else. But anyway, another two or three comments, and then I'll let y'all ask, well, I mean, let them ask questions, I don't want to, obviously. This, come twenty twenty-six budget, there will not be any salary increases, with the exception of Andy and Robin, who are really not affected by this, except just, I mean, that much, not much at all. And Jeff and I discussed possibly, there's, the two new police officers came in way under, and if we, if the council were to approve their raises, would be the only raises, and that'd be a total of about five thousand dollars, is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah.
About five thousand dollars, but otherwise, nobody else gets a raise. Our step, if, come December, had we not, if we don't do this program, our step raises would be about fifty-eight thousand, so that almost covers the second half of the year of this, if I'm making any sense with that. I mean, it's obviously new money, but we would be doing that anyway, with step raises is about fifty, is a little over fifty-eight thousand dollars. And I'm gonna stop there and let y'all ask questions, Jeff may have to answer the questions instead of me, but we can, we have the cash available to pay from July to December thirty-one, without affecting the budget at all. Also, next year, right now, SROs, schools pay seventy-five, we pay twenty-five, we have asked, and don't know if we'll get it, but we have told them, we need y'all to pay a hundred percent, and don't know that they will, they said no automatically, and they've come back for discussion, so there's possibly that that would be even less money going forward. Yeah, I'll try to answer your questions, I know that's a lot of it.
Sean said that moving this money is legal.
Yes, 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 I ran it with Sean, and I ran it by him again yesterday. He said, all you gotta do is amend your budget. That's a lot of facts, and I know it's...
Father, I know they need it, and if we can get it, and have got some, I would be for it.
You know, and I don't wanna say this is a fix-all for everything, we could still lose people, but if we did, it would be much easier to hire someone back with these salaries that are comparable to Van Buren and the sheriff's office and all these people, not with Northwest Arkansas, not with state police, not with highway police, can't do it, I mean, we can't do it, it's not even a question of that.
I know if I could drive twenty minutes from my house and make an extra thirty percent to forty percent more doing the same job, that would be a no-brainer for me.
Sure.
So, I mean, retention is a big deal, we're not retaining well now. I know that, you know, the money that we've got set aside right now covers just the rest of this year, we're gonna have to, but it's something we're gonna have to really talk about next year and figure out how we can make that work, you know, I think we can be creative with it, we've already talked about having to do some other things for next year anyway. I think as far as equipment goes and stuff like that, we've done a really good job of keeping up with equipment, we've got cars, if we need to discuss what that looks like in the coming year, I think we can probably move some stuff around there, but I don't see a way we don't do this. We're gonna lose officers, and if we lose those officers, we're gonna have to pay the same amount of money or more to replace them.
Yeah, and, well, I'm not gonna use your name, sorry, I can't say that, I just, I can't.
So mayor, when you, when you, you discuss amending the budget, is that correct?
Yes.
So what's the proper procedure for sort of that?
Rhonda can probably ask me to answer this better now, you basically go back to account number one, four, two, two oh six, which is car purchase, and we'll...
That's in January, though.
Yeah, yeah.
You can do it at any time.
We can do it, we can do it now, if we have time, right.
I can amend it now, just have to document it.
And we basically take this money...
Historically, we've done all that in January, though.
We will pay down on the cars and take the car money and pay salaries.
So, let me ask this, mayor, so step raises are fifty-eight K, or sixty-eight to make up the difference?
Yes, sir.
As far as that goes?
Yeah.
The, it says start the other incentives in twenty twenty-six, what is that based in?
Oh.
Where is that?
Oh.
Or what is that?
It's, okay, I'll, I'll change that.
If you'll remember, when I had the proposal a couple of months ago, I proposed starting some things next year, and then waiting to, or starting some things this year, and then waiting until next year to start some of the other incentives. Some of that's education pay, there's some incentives for certain types of training, what else was in that?
Oh.
There was some sick leave incentive, where if someone didn't use sick time all year, or a minimum amount of sick time, they got a small incentive. You know, and that's something that, I told the mayor that, you know, we had talked about waiting until next year to start those things, but, you know, obviously, budget time, and if there's not money there to do that, then there's not money there to do that, but...
Do you recall about what they estimated that those incentives were gonna be for our calendar year, budget talk?
Like, was it eleven or twelve thousand, Jeff, or was that...
Um, I don't remember.
I apologize.
So what, so what we're discussing...
I didn't bring anything with me tonight.
So what we're discussing right now specifically is, start the other incentives in twenty twenty-six, that's a to-be budgeted item.
Correct.
For next year.
Correct.
We're talking about taking care of the top summing line items, which are basically salary, holiday, salary on those lines.
Correct, yes, sir. And not that this is a big deal, but you'll see that CID incentive pay will actually be reduced almost four thousand, because that's the way we have incented that particular, we didn't have a slot for that particular employee, and we won't have to incent them anymore, from that standpoint.
So is this impacting the SRO? Well, you said that we've asked this school system...
Wait, yes.
To compensate some additional...
Correct.
So is it the, so that's taking, is that eleven thousand subtraction for the SRO reimbursement? Is that taken into consideration, full hundred percent reimbursement, or is that...
No, just where we are today.
That's where we are, okay, okay.
And just a little bit on that, if you've seen, there's a lot of school districts that's creating their own police department, so since we changed the SROs to the school calendar, we still pay twenty-five percent of their salary, and we really don't get any use out of them, we still pay for their car, we pay for their equipment, their training, and we don't get anything out of that, other than having someone at the school. And so, when I sat down with the school, the first thing I asked them was, you know, is creating your own police department is something that y'all are even considering doing, and they told me no, because they said that would cost us way too much money, and y'all are, y'all are providing it already, so... So the discussion started with them maybe paying some more, us still taking care of the training and the equipment and stuff, but then picking up some more of the salary and benefits, and at first, they said no, and about a week later, he called me and said, hey, let's sit down and talk again, and we did, and they're doing, he said, they support the raises and keep paying the seventy-five percent, but he was gonna run some numbers and maybe look at taking over one hundred percent of the salary and benefits for the SROs, and I still continue to provide the car and the equipment and that type of stuff.
But you're correct, it's not in this, the hundred percent.
Right, yeah, this is... Right, okay, yeah, this is just that.
And the eleven thousand down there, it, it, Leon Edge retired a couple of months ago and his salary in this, in the budget, that's what we won't be paying the rest of the year for him.
No, that's, that's why we didn't have a, because we haven't filled his spot.
Yeah.
So from, from April up until August, that would be what we, what we budgeted for that decision, uh, that we haven't.
Right, that's it. And then within another, not this calendar year, it's the next calendar year, uh, that grant program starts to fade out, correct?
Um, it would be, this is the first year and it's for three years.
Yeah.
The third year.
The third year is when it really starts. But the, the first year and the second year were pretty much a hundred percent covered for that.
Yeah, and then it cut down to twenty-five percent or some thirty or a small number.
Yeah.
A tough call, but I think it's a, a necessary investment. And I think we can handle it. I'm not naive to think that other departments might not come with the same kind of proposals. But, uh, I, I think this is something we really need to do.
So how do we go about doing this, Mayor?
Make a motion to approve it. Uh, I'll get with Sean to see if we need a resolution at the next meeting. But I don't think we do, but, uh, I will find out. We will obviously do it legally.
I'll make the motion that we approve the salary increase that was presented here.
I'll, I'll send that motion.
Roll call.
Sandra C. Patrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasen Gang?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Evan Backland?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
I think you guys did a marvelous investment.
Well, I think, I think we've still got a lot of discussion.
Sure.
For, for the twenty-twenty-six and beyond calendar year. But, um, we've got some time to discuss that, plan for that. I don't know, Chief, we'll be working on that and, and have something together for us when we start talking budget. Um, I, I don't see a, a path forward though without making sure that we're taking care of those officers.
I agree. Thank you very much. Okay, department reports, Chief Parsons?
I didn't send out the report to everybody, but I didn't send it to Andy, the, uh, the mayor. I don't know if y'all had the mail.
It should be in the package.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, yeah.
All right, good. I didn't know for sure it isn't or not, but, uh, so we had nine calls, five EMS, one guest suite, two fire cores, and one fire lawn. Um, this Saturday morning, we'll be burning the dam. Mark had it mowed, uh, last Monday, it was on Monday. So, uh, we're gonna burn it Tuesday night, but, uh, Victor Palay, our forestry guy, said it wouldn't be a good idea Tuesday night. Uh, he's Captain Larrick, he's our red fire, uh, forestry guy. So, uh, we come up Saturday morning, seven o'clock, we're gonna go down there and, uh, pre-burn it for the Fourth July fireworks. And, uh, with that, uh, I have a, uh, award or a, uh, this is accomplishment of, uh, David Banks spent twelve weeks of his own personal time and, uh, passed his EMR test, uh, state level, then he passed the national. And, um, very ninety-six hours of twelve weeks he took out of his time. And, uh, uh, he was on one of the thirty firemen that did it. And he was, uh, very good at what he does. So, we wanna recognize him and, uh, I've got, he's got the plaque, the, and I wish the mayor could come up and picture the.
Just me and him, I hope.
Yeah. Daughters are here also, all his support.
We'll do one and then let him do it.
This is national recognition, an emergency medical responder. Mr. Banks, here, you getting a medal, you the man.
I'm getting one, cause David's the man.
But, uh, it's a lot, lot to it.
Now y'all take him over to family. Put your eyes up.
Thank you, thank you. That is very simple, that's all we have.
David, as a reward for doing good, you don't have to stay. Take your family out there.
There's no place I'd rather be.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have any questions for David?
He has conduct legends.
Yeah, they grasp. I, I'm, yes.
I'm just, I'm just waiting for somebody to collapse.
Waiting for somebody to fall out.
That's a big accomplishment. I mean, he's part of a, he's spent a lot of time, I mean, it's, uh, in the test, uh, he was sweating. And we saw on it, he said he got all the way to like ninety percent of the ninety-six.
Supposed to be.
Cut him off. And he was worried about passing it and they called us the next day and told me to pass.
David is a quality individual, y'all hold him up.
He keeps us grabbing it.
So it's gotta be, it's gotta be.
Get the handles of hearts, so.
Oh, okay. Hey, Chief Parsons?
Yes.
You had another further request in the package?
Yes.
Who do you need to discuss on?
Well, we hadn't, we hadn't decided on what one to go with.
Okay.
And that's, we have the money. I mean, it's, uh.
So there any discussion that we can have on that?
Any discussion that we need to.
No, I mean, maybe next month, but they're checking and, um, they pushed our, they're gonna come five more weeks. So, we're kinda in the bubble of what to do right now. What, we're gonna buy the Pierce or build a banner, so. That's where that's at.
What are, what are the, what are the new trucks? I mean, what stage or whatever?
They won't even start building them till they're two years out.
Good God.
So, and they keep pushing them out, so.
Yeah.
Kinda.
Chief Porter?
Well, first, thank y'all very much. Um, that's something that we worked hard on and, um, increasing the pay. And I know our guys will really appreciate, appreciate that and so thank y'all. Um, you guys should have gotten, uh, my report in your pocket. Uh, just not boring you with, with everything I put in there, but, uh, hitting on a couple of things. The new police department, um, seems like we're, uh, moving along, but we found out real quick that we don't have enough money to do what they think we need to do and what we wanna do. So, um, during May, we met with them twice. Um, they presented us with a, a kind of a space needs assessment. They, they, uh, walked through our building again, looked in every closet just about and every office and every room and, and then sat down and, and asked some questions. And so they put together a proposal of what they think when you build a police department, you should build it to where it'll, it'll suit you for the next ten to twelve years. Um, they came up with, uh, uh, that we need a building of about thirteen thousand eight hundred square feet. Um, they said, we're just, here's the plans that we made for that, but we're just gonna tell you right now, you can't afford that. So, right now, we're looking at, um, a building around eight or nine thousand square feet. Um, they think that's what's in our budget. And at this point right now, that will not include a shop building. Um, they're currently running some cost estimates, uh, for two reasons. One, that's the stage we're kinda in. Uh, two, we kinda need a cost estimate because if we're able to get the grant that you guys approved the resolution for, uh, it will add the shop building back. Um, inside the shop building, um, would be a larger training room and a processing bay for evidence and things like that. If we're able to, to get the grant and add those things back, then we'll, I think we'll be getting in a lot better shape, so. During, during May, we also hosted, uh, an alert training class, which is the Advanced Law Enforcement and Response Training Course. Uh, some guys from the alert came in, taught a two-day course. Uh, since we were hosting in here, we were able to send ten of our guys through it. And we used one of the schools and we appreciate them for letting us use it because there were some practical exercises in it. And, uh, those are one of the things that we can't, you know, we wouldn't have been able to send two people to the other side of the state to take this class, but since it was here and we hosted it, we were able to do that. Something that Chief Parsons didn't mention is the Boots and Budgets Blood Drive, which has been scheduled for July the twenty-ninth, uh, to be at the community building. Something new that the blood institute's doing this year, um, and, and both of our departments agree. Uh, there's a program to where each person that comes in and donates, there will be a donation made to the home shop with a top program. And that donation varies based on, some of it's what blood type you are, some of it's if you're a new donor. And so, it's kind of a, a, a way to, for people to give blood and then also give back to nonprofits. So, um, I'm looking forward to see how that works out. Uh, one thing, I've been talking to Sean, um, and he, I haven't really gotten an answer yet. It's one thing we're, but I'm gonna bring this up to make sure it's something that you guys would be okay with us doing and then we'll get the required paperwork together for that. Um, we're, we're in the process of going through, um, a lot of our old evidence and trying to get rid of a lot of things. And what we're coming across is money, some money in the evidence room. Some of it we can't get rid of, uh, because it's still tied up in a case. But it may be three or four dollars in this case or a couple hundred dollars or a couple thousand dollars. Um, what a lot of departments are doing now is they're creating a bank account for their evidence funds. So, um, it makes it a lot, I think, a lot safer. There's more of a paper trail on it. Uh, instead of putting it in your evidence room, you would go deposit it into this account in the bank. It would be a non-interest bearing account, uh, but you deposit it in this account. And if you need to get that back out for, to release back to someone or, or dispose of, however, uh, then you would go withdraw it and there would be a paper trail on that. Uh, but they, it's a lot, a lot, uh, more secure than just having it in your evidence room. Would you guys have a problem with me moving forward with, with giving?
It sounds like, it sounds like the best thing to do, yeah, yeah.
All right. And again, I've been, Sean's checked into a couple of things. Uh, I've talked to a couple of other departments that do this. And, um, really the only requirements of it is, uh, it has to be, you know, it's kinda like our drug asset, uh, account that we, we control that. Um, then, you know, all the bank paperwork would be secured in the evidence room. But, um, you know, it wouldn't actually be a, it'd be a city account, but it wouldn't be anything that was interfered with the general fund. So, um, I'll start working on that with Sean and, um, I'm not sure if it just has to be approved in minutes or, uh, there has to be a resolution, but we'll get that worked out. I'll probably come back with, with that next month. And unless you guys have questions, that's all I've got.
I'll bet a little bit on the canine. Canine.
Is, uh, eats a lot of food. Now, I, I, they're doing really good. Um, you know, they, they do a lot of training each month. Um, he normally tries to average about sixteen hours of training a month. And some of that's during his shift. I mean, sometimes he'll come in the office and, and get somebody and say, hey, go hide it. And we have some training, um, uh, it's, it's not real drugs. It's for training purposes that, that we purchase. And so, we'll go hide it and, and watch the dog find it. Uh, but last weekend, weekend before last, uh, no, it wasn't this last weekend. Um, I think he got his first load, um, got a little over fifty pounds of marijuana and almost five pounds of mushrooms. And so, and the way they had this packaged, Colton never smelt it. Um, they had, they had it concealed and, uh, he never smelled it. And so, but Joe alerted on it and, and, uh, and so he was able to, to get that and so, you know, it's great.
Any other questions? Any questions for Chief?
The, the only question I have is regarding the architects and everything. So Plan, so Plan A is hopefully to get the one point five million economic development for the shop. What's the alternative? Because I know that was one of the things that we went to the voters on for space requirements as well as shop requirements.
Um, if not, then we take the money that we have and we build what we can. Um, it, it's a smaller, um, smaller building and obviously not the size training room that we'd, we'd like to have. It would be cut down some, uh, there's some area, um, some offices and some storage rooms we would cut out. But the main thing would be reducing the size of the training room, um, not having the evidence processing bay. Um, and really probably not having the shop at all, but.
Ever.
At this time. But still having everything that we would need and that, it would still be an upgrade, uh, in space from where we are now.
Any other questions for Chief Porter?
Thank y'all.
Mr. Argyle?
And, um, I'm gonna keep mine short tonight. Um, we, uh, we had a pre-construction meeting today on the manginies removal pressure filter project. And, um, we issued a notice to proceed for July fourteenth. And the project's, uh, the project timeframe is three hundred and sixty-five days. So, uh, the contractor doesn't think they'll leave three hundred and sixty-five days. That's, that's what we're allowing on the contract. And, uh, uh, we, we were able to get several local subcontractors. Steve Bean Construction is gonna do all the, the concrete work and quite good at that. And we're very happy to hear that that's who showed, uh, Axis Electrics doing some of the electrical work. And, and we've also had a relationship with them in the past. So, we were happy to hear about that. And, um, hopefully the project will, uh, run smoothly. They, uh, the contractor did a, a preliminary review of the underground obstacles that they're going to encounter. And, um, the fortunate thing is that J.L. Bryce and the company that, that got the project, they, they're the ones that actually did the recent, well, not recent, the, the latest expansion at the water treatment plant. So, they're quite familiar with the facility and, and, uh, how to work around the existing, uh, operation without causing problems. So, we're, we're very pleased with that. So that all went very well today. Um, the, uh, as you know, we've been, uh, working on that ACT six oh five, um, rate study. Uh, that's well underway now. Uh, we keep, uh, providing additional information to the engineering firm as this, uh, it's conducting the rate study. And we, uh, we're hoping to have some results on that by about, about three months from now. It's gonna take a little while, but in about three months, I hope to come to a completed rate study for your approval. And, uh, as I've told y'all before, this study is required by the state for us to conduct. And, and the, uh, the unfortunate part of that is whatever that study says is required of us and our rate payers is something we're gonna have to consider, so. I, I hope that it comes out well. I'm, I'm optimistic that it's not gonna be a major change in what we're already doing. Uh, I think we've done a really good job of, of trying to stay ahead of the, the issues related to, to rate shock. And I think we've done a good job of doing incremental increases to keep that from happening. So, um, other than that, you know, the, the sidewalk project on, on the south side has, uh, has been underway for some time. Um, we talked with the cultural resources folks that are gonna have to complete that study. It was something that, that we didn't know we were gonna have to do. And, um, basically the land adjacent to the cemetery, uh, is gonna have to be studied. They're gonna have to do some excavation and, and look for artifacts and, and, um, there's, you know, it's something we were not anticipating. At first, we thought we were gonna have to do ground penetrating radar to ensure that there were no graves in that area. But they, they've come away from that now and decided that, that we are just gonna have to do some excavation. So they'll just dig some sample holes. So they'll just dig some sample holes every so many feet and determine if there's anything in there that could be of cultural significance that we need to protect. So the good thing is that we thought, you know, this is, this is gonna be terribly expensive. It sounds expensive, but we found a contractor to conduct this study for five thousand dollars. So we were quite pleased with that. It's not gonna have an impact on the project like we thought it would. So other than that, we're still waiting on the contractor to begin the column lane overlay project. Emery Sapp and Sons is gonna do that. They're gonna do it at the same time they're doing seventy-one highway. And they, they've made a little noise like they're gonna be coming soon, but then they backed off on that. So I can't even give you a, a date for that. So if, once I do know something, I'll try to let you know. That's about all I have to share. So do y'all have any questions?
I want to compliment you, your staff and previous councils on those water increases over the years that nobody liked. But I think we're gonna be very pleased when this one comes out.
Compared to the city that's ACT six oh five for sure, yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Any questions for you, Arden? Cody?
I'm gonna take Mark's lead and put this on the list. Twenty-four permits issued in March of May. Total revenue was just under six thousand. One commercial addition summit issued, then three residential permits, well, it's two residential, two remodel permits issued. Walmart will be doing a small remodel, basically just adding on to their break room area. But next year, I believe they will be doing a ten million dollar remodel. So here is that. Pathfinder RV Park, they currently have thirty-six spots, but they will be doubling that amount here starting in July. So I believe back in her Memorial Day weekend, they only had three spots open. So it's been staying pretty busy and clean. So all those people are spending money in our community.
Yeah, they have stayed very full. I was one of the people that said, I didn't, I didn't think it'd do well over there. And I've had to eat those birds. They have stayed full and have stayed very nice over there.
Jerry Valentine, which I'm sure all of you guys know, he's on the planning commission as well. And he actually was basically enamored with this RV that was there. He brought over a pizza and wanted to, you know, chat like, why are you guys here? You know, that kind of stuff. Well, I guess he's a musician and he really likes this spot here in Alamo because it's centered to the United States. For him to either go shows or play in shows. Now, I don't know what musician he is or what his band is, but that's just the information I'm getting.
Interesting.
And I believe even Springdale is loosening up, which I read, I think recently, that they're loosening up some of their zoning to allow more RV parks because of it serving as an additional need for kind of affordable housing in a way. Now, RVs are expensive, but also houses are more expensive. So I don't know, it's just something to consider in the future. It'll be kind of a nice thing to look at as next one goes their rounds.
So that next phase of additions that they're adding, are they adding spots?
North.
Be north of what they've got?
Here. Toward interstate.
I don't know if it's, it might be closer to the highway.
Interstate.
Do you know if they're gonna need to add anything on the front end there by their entrance to accommodate more people there?
No, that's even other original plans. They only had that one entrance, which is probably for the best anyway.
Yeah, I, I just didn't know if they were gonna need to expand that, you know, make it wider? Or if they had, you know, more planes for that building there, anything like that that they discussed?
I'd say even on their plans, their original plans, you know, what they have there. Besides, they were gonna have like living quarters inside of it, you know, for an onsite manager. But they never did that. Now, in the future, I don't know, it could change. But attended the Arkansas Rural Development Conference. There's a lot of great information there where one community was using their business licenses as incentives for new businesses to come in or for businesses already there and using those, some of those funds, almost like a grant in a way, to fix up their property. So some kind of interesting stuff to learn. They did mention one of them that they use Placer and they use it to, basically they go to this conference, retail conference down in Dallas. However, they also get a company to analyze that data. They take that to Dallas where they're able to give their elevator rates to some of these vendors. But just something to consider as well in the future. Quick trip, finally got ahold of them. They'll be mowing either Friday or next week, basically. And I'll let you know the weather. It's supposed to rain next week, so hopefully it's tomorrow. But they're aware, mayor, they, apparently they called the mayor after I've, I've left several voicemails. And they said they got the green light to go ahead. So we should be seeing some movement, really demolition here soon. But we've also heard that they're not gonna do anything, so, but I'm gonna go with the conversation with the mayor, so. Planning Commission, we had a meeting due to our bylaws where we have to meet at least once per quarter week. Nothing was voted on, but we did discuss a new utility ordinance. I'm sure you've seen Ritter come around, not Ritter themselves, or Ritter's contractors, you've seen it around. And they'll be, I'd say they're almost finished, really about two weeks out. But they've been placing the utilities in the right way, which is not preferable, which you can ask Mark all about the headaches. They're not using the easements basically that are planted in subdivisions where they should be filling. And so with this new utility ordinance, that will be voted on or approved by the planning commission to send to y'all for approval. I'd say it'll be, it'll require them to use the utility easements because as of now, we don't have anything. And they're using what they have available, so. Other than that, also just talked about updating the zoning code and then what's like changes that happened, which is several. So if you want information on that, I can send you the whole curriculum.
So Ritter's putting their lines in and not using our easements. How widespread is that? Is that one, one area or is that all of them?
Well, everywhere where they're going.
Yeah.
Mainly on the, mainly on the north side of sixty-four, right? That's where I've seen most of the utility work.
You know, yeah, well, no. Well, yeah, yeah, north side.
That's dominant.
I was thinking I forty, yeah.
Yeah.
Larry, what are your thoughts, experience with pleasure or anything?
We kind of had a little conversation during the AMP meeting, just a bit about it's, Cody's played around with it a little bit more recently. But for some of the data that we're able to get out of it, they have blackout areas around the schools simply because of privacy, security, whatever kind of concerns that they have, which are well founded. However, most of our major events occur around the schools. So we're not able to get as good of an insight. Cody found out that with one of the activities that we had in downtown, the Pokemon at our hall, that had a really good turnout. But the unfortunate side is that when, you know, I'll, I'll paraphrase if you want, or do you wanna paraphrase? I was just gonna say is that when he went to run the report, couldn't really gain the data that you were seeking. However, when he emailed our customer success manager, they emailed him the report right back with the.
How far from the school is blacked out?
Property. It's, it's literally the property, so.
So even the parking lot?
Yep, yep, because that car show, I tried to, you know, pull some statistics on that and nothing. And they have a couple of workarounds. The only challenge is, is the workarounds on sixty-four B would give us questionable data simply because it impacts the traffic going past that point. And it's a major highway. So it's not like turning down a side street and going like, oh, there's the entrance. It's, it's a major highway.
Although they are downtown now.
But it's doing really well for them.
I'd say I did, you know, just messing around with it. And a fifteen mile radius are downtown is the top, or top fifth attraction in the area.
And we ran some stuff around like the parks, Tony Martel across Crystal Park, the Aquatic Park, the, the north parking lot of the trails. And we're finding out, you know, there's some draw coming in on the bike trails and everything coming in from northwest Arkansas. The Aquatic Park is getting a lot of folks from Fort Smith and the River Valley. So it, it has some good info.
Yeah, number one was, I believe, the Lake Fort Smith. And then second was our park.
Yep.
Lake Allen.
Any questions, Cody? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Ms. Rhonda?
Yeah, my special question. We did have the twenty twenty-three audit complete at the end of May. And at the beginning, we should go legislative. The second week of July, I believe it was, the second Tuesday of July, something like that. So y'all should be getting the packets pretty soon. She had had all her addresses and stuff there, so. They did pull, and she was finishing that up. Roscoe named all the twenty twenty corner makers in May as well. She's already well underway on that one, but so far, I think it's going good, so. Very glad. She did tell me yesterday morning that originally she said she would be here through September. She told us yesterday morning that she thought she might finish in August. So that's very encouraging. And Ms. Brittany here.
She's trying to start her retirement.
Yeah, she's rushing, yeah.
We did her in, I'm gonna did her in.
Okay, fine with it. Ms. Brittany's doing very well and she did come from the administrative form of government that's in Fort Smith. And so there's been a couple of times she's started to walk me on something and I was like, council mayor. Oh, yeah. And she's, but she's digging in and she has any downtime at all. And sometimes just while she's waiting for something to process, she'll pop up a training and, and just digging in and learning the council mayor form of government. Very good. So I believe carefully, this plan will work out and y'all have her for a long time and you'll be in good hands for sure. Full open Lake May is going pretty strong and so that means daily deposits, so it kind of ups our, our daily workload. But everything's going pretty good there. Adlib asked to use electronic onboarding for his employees this year, which basically means he lets me know I hired this person in this position at this pay and I go in and build profile and send them an onboarding package through that. Then they have to go in there and do all the tax forms, I-nines, upload their ID documents and all that on the MyHR platform. Most of the kids are not uploading any documents. So it, which is a thing of the world, just means they have to bring me the documents and then I have to manually input them and we go through the final approval process. But their tax forms and all that I can't do for them. So we had a few hiccups with kids, it was like, a lot of what I'm doing. And then they would finish those and then we're gonna do the finals again. We did get those all completed. We hired a new young lady yesterday, centered the thing today. We gotta finish today. So one, I think he's learning how to instruct them and then they're about them calling me and, and they're realizing, hey, we have to do this if we wanna get our paycheck. So it's working out. The IT team completed migration server. We were shut down for a while, I think it was the second week of May. We had in code shut down for one whole day and part of the next morning, because they ran into a couple of hiccups on it. But everything's going good now. It's a little faster, it's not a whole lot faster, archiving things are a little quicker than they used to be. But we're supposed to, they're archived, I'm usually at the airport. But it is bad and everything's going good so far. They did charge, as I put in there, that they did charge a slip in a book to do that. Being on my hand and eye, kind of a quick calculation because we could up our package agreement in code to cover that. But we're not gonna replace that server for, you know, at least seven years probably. So the, the cost offset was, this is about half what it would cost if we upped that plan and covered that on a monthly basis. So we just left it at that. Payroll tax turnbacks were down about eleven hundred dollars from twenty twenty-four. I just got May's today and they're down a little bit as well. So that just kind of seems to be a trank for the, for the year. The NEU account is finally at a zero balance. Fire got their last invoices in on those fire radio things. They did, the invoice came and it left three hundred and eleven dollars and some change in the account. So it comes to take and you just gonna give you something else and charge you this amount. And they did it for us. We got a couple more little parts and they made the invoice exactly what we needed to get that to a zero. So I spoke with Karen Curry in Little Rock. She's the first of grants, law of the way to get there. And she said we can close that account effectively immediately with your permission. So if y'all, y'all have no problem with closing that account, we're gonna go ahead and do that.
Close it, okay.
I'll be happy to.
And do we need to vote on that or is it just in the minutes?
Uh, we just need it in the minutes. Yes, I spoke with Michelle June and she was, because it was in the minutes, Sean had put it in minutes to open the account back, back in twenty twenty, I believe it was. Twenty twenty again, twenty twelve. So she said just in the minutes, of course, it was it. We'll point out that there, she had put that in an interest bearing account. And when I spoke with Little Rock about what to do with all of that, well, seeing the reports, I've just been transferring that to the general miscellaneous revenue line item. So that total amount was just right at twenty four thousand or lower of interest that we got off of that account all that money. So then we were waiting for all the projects to complete. So that was general miscellaneous revenue. We cannot use it as an arc of funding. We had to move it to the general. That was all complete. We, I'm gonna start training Ms. Brittany as the director of finance. When she comes back, she's on vacation. She had a pre-planned trip with the girls on the travel ball team. So they had a trip planned before deployment and so there's something we wanna hold her from that. But when she comes back, we're gonna start training on the payroll and all of it. And she's doing very well in the council table. She just needs to get a full understanding of that so she can know how to check off and what to watch for on the other side. We're gonna start training the director and flip offices again. Any questions?
Rhonda's done, obviously, a tremendous job. What she wouldn't say because you're not supposed to, but it's not official. But the preliminary reportable findings, last year we had twenty-two. This year, we're gonna have three, but we really aren't gonna have one for twenty twenty-three because the other two had to do with payroll, taxes and bank reconciliations. But, and she even mentioned in her report, but starting in October, everything was fine. So we went from twenty-two to one preliminary. But I, that's why it's gonna be two out there.
She'll put comments in.
That's a lot of work.
She put comments in her report stating, you know, that from this day forward, things were corrected. But she said it's like.
Yeah, she said they'll take that out.
Probably kind of put some of that stuff up.
Both, both.
Before they sent the package to you.
Good for her to put it in there, yeah.
We had a lot of help, but ones this made, we had a lot of help for that and we appreciate it.
That was a good battle. We won that battle. Anything else?
Congratulations. We've all been holding our breath.
Now, I'm ready for the twenty twenty-four one, so I can see how, because I made a lot of process changes. I built a lot of SOPs which have helped with her audit because she was like, well, I just have to see it. And I'm like, oh, I built an SOP and I could, and I've just sent that to her. And so she's been able to use those for a lot of her reporting and that's, and of course, Brittany thanks me for that immediately. And she's all, thank you for the SOPs. And they're still a work in progress. I made the change at the first of this year, the layout input table. Because we, and we built this process with audit officers. We would build a journal entry process and just put them directly into those line items through the journal entry process. Manual journal through the process. And at the first of this year, I was looking at that. I received those as an invoice from my HR professional. They're, they're a vendor for us that is processing our payroll. So I called and said, hey, is there any reason I can't just process that as an invoice? I'm still gonna do the spreadsheet to show all the line items and, and all of that and just process it as an invoice. And there's no problem with that. So it minimized the paperwork a little bit, minimized the time a little bit, and Jimmy, it's just a long, complex plan on what's happening.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Briefly on the parks, the equipment we ordered for the old park down by the aquatic park is on the ground here. We hope to have installation in July. The installation teams are behind because of weather. But don't look on Facebook. I didn't know that, I keep thinking, forgetting we're recorded, aren't we? I didn't know that AstroTurf caused cancer, I wouldn't have ordered it, but. I didn't know that, uh, AstroTurf caused cancer, I wouldn't have ordered it, but, I think we'll be all right there. Uh, Crystal Park, the restroom is basically complete, we've gotta get with Mr. Yardley and his crew to, uh, run the lines and all, they've agreed to do that, we have to pay for the materials and all, it'll save us a lot of money. I visited with Tracy a wop-a-ditty Tuesday, and hopefully she's gonna come over next week, one day, and we're gonna start preliminarily, uh, getting ready to, uh, work on the playground equipment, so I'm looking forward to that. And if you see a new builder in town, or someone that you haven't seen building before, we're missing fourteen tuba fours, four tuba sixes, and some roofing material that left the, the site down there, someone hauled it off, and so. And, uh, yeah, it was unfortunate, but that happens. Aquatic Park, it, it's been a crazy year, as y'all well know. Last year Memorial Weekend, we did forty-five thousand dollars, this Memorial Day Weekend, we did six thousand dollars. Uh, we have operated, uh, uh, through, as I said, we've had six total rainouts, and we've had fifteen parcel rainouts, and the parcels, I mean, you know, we opened at two and nobody comes, so we, we've actually operated thirty-three days, but interestingly enough, from, from April one to June twenty-five of twenty-four and twenty-five, the total revenue is actually up fifty-three thousand dollars. A lot of it has to do with season passes, we sold more season passes this year than in the past, for whatever reason. Uh, but that will, while it's good now, that will hurt us in July and August, probably won't have that income. Uh, but since the rain has stopped, since we've been open, we're running about five percent over, week to week where we were this time last year, in revenue. Uh, as of May thirty, and that's, you know, we had taken away the capital, the money that AMP gave us, I take, I don't consider that income, although it's in there, uh, we were about probably nineteen thousand dollar income over expenses. Capital expenditures, we replaced one motor and pump, we repaired the pipe to the toilet bowl, we patched and painted two pools. Adam was in yesterday and reported that from, from yesterday to Labor Day, we only have four nights that there's not a party. As of today, there's only two, there's a party every night, it's really, really been amazing. And seventy-five plus percent out of rent from out of town, churches, schools, uh, di- different organizations, so it's, it's, that's, that's been really, really good for us this year. Uh, and that's really about all to say about the, the pool. Gotta, this, you know, I, I get all, I get a complaint every now and then, but it was so rewarding, it goes back to something that, um, Larry said earlier, I got an email that said, I wanna thank, I wanted to let you know how impressed I am with Lake Alma Park and Trail. I hiked the trail around the lake yesterday for the first time and really enjoyed it. The trail's in great shape and laid out well, providing hikers with a diverse to- to- topography and sites. Some really nice trail building skills are obvious along the entire route. A little bit of litter, but that's fault of irresponsible visitors. Uh, and then, thanks for sharing the beautiful area with the public and maintaining such a great trail. Thanks to the scouts who provide the occasional benches for us. This is a gentleman that hikes all the time, and he's from Bella Vista, and obviously he's got very good trails up there to compare to, but that was, and he wanted to know a couple of things, and I gotta be careful, Jim Warwick, about the history and all that, but he just wanted to share that with you. Very, very nice to get something like that, and, and, and that's really, uh, as far as Mayor knows, just, just a couple of things. Uh, Cody mentioned, I visited with a gentleman in charge of, uh, development with, uh, Quick Trail. He, he's going to Little Rock, week after next, and he's gonna stop by and visit. He said, I do want you, he said, we haven't ignored you, he said, we, you're isolated, we wanted to finish Salasol, and he said, the rest of time we've been up in Northwest Arkansas purchasing land, he said, I met with you, met with y'all's project Monday a week ago, green light, uh, we'll get your grass done this week or Monday, whatever, because it looks horrible, and he said, I apologize, he said, outside, out of mind, you know, you're over there, and we, you know, but he said, we'll get it tended to, and he said, and we're making plans now to start demolition, he did not give me a date, but I'll get some more information when he stops by. Uh, want to remind you that the fourth of July, if you're available, uh, we have a free swim from seven to ten. Uh, one, one of Melinda McSpadden's entities, I don't know which one, uh, is providing free hot dogs, chips, and water, I believe, starting at five o'clock. Other thing, I will have, uh, Kathy email you tomorrow to get y'all to check your calendars for July the twenty-fourth, it's the Thursday. Uh, I remember Evan saying, you know, the only possible times I can be, meet is the Thursday or Friday. Uh, and I hope we don't have to be Friday, but we desperately need a planning session, and we probably need more than one planning session. Uh-
What was that date?
About July the twenty-fourth, and I'll send that to you tomorrow, it's the Thursday after our, uh, council meeting. Uh, I started to do it that, the week before, but that's too soon, I think, because I wanna give the department heads who've come up with a, 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 a better plan. Uh, it'll be easier to come up with needs, the difficult part's will come up with money, you know, but, uh, we need to discuss, I think, some reorganization, uh, and I, I look forward to just a good planning session, but I'll get that out to you tomorrow. And Evan works, Larry works, James works, it's five o'clock, too early for y'all, do we need to make it later? I mean, I, okay, we, we, but I will get this out to you, and, and see if that works for everybody, of course. I know James can get off of that.
James doesn't really work.
Oh, he does? What?
He, he tells you he does, but it's not really working.
Well, I went over to visit him not long ago, and I said, well, he's busy, can you wait? And I said, oh, sure. I think they have that trick there.
I told him the mayor was coming, holding him.
They had to call him, get him out of bed, and he just come down there.
I really don't have anything else, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions or listen to any suggestions.
I have something, this is from Mark, um, I have a citizen that is concerned with the mosquitoes, um, about the truck sprays, is there anything that you can do to fix that, Mark?
Yeah, I, I heard you, yeah, the, uh, we've had, we've had several calls here recently, I know the mayor's office has had a few calls about, um, about the mosquito spraying. I mean, we, we, what we usually do is that the first part of May, we get lots of phone calls about the mosquitoes. And then once we start spraying, that kinda, that kinda dries down. But then, as we begin spraying, then we start getting the other calls, the calls complaining about the spraying. And so it's kind of a, a catch twenty-two, you know, where, you know, we, we, we have to decide as a community who we want to cater to. And so, and then I use that word carefully. And, and what I mean by that is that, is that, you know, without the spraying, there is a serious mosquito problem, and it's mostly, it's mostly here on this part of town, from the downtown south. It's, and this is because it's where more water is, it's where more water, if you have water, you have mosquitoes. So, um, but, the problem is that we all know that, you know, the pollinators, which are the bees and the, and the butterflies and the, and the dragonflies, they are affected by the spray that we spray. And, um, you know, Caitlin had noticed that here downtown on Fayetteville Avenue, we have all these flowers, and there were hardly any butterflies or bees, and she, you know, it was like shocking, and, uh, so, so we stopped spraying Fayetteville Avenue, and we've seen an amazing resurgence of, of butterflies and bees on Fayetteville Avenue. And so, you know, just, you know, just, just from that example, I'm, I, I feel certain that there is an impact. What, what can we do as an alternative? I mean, you can't, as a city, do a, 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 a widespread, uh, there's no other widespread solution. There is lots of things individuals can do on their own properties, and that is to, to, you know, empty out things that contain water. There's all kinds of little pellets that they can put in, in things where water is standing, that have a bacteria that, that are, are effective against the, uh, the larvae of mosquitoes, there's all kinds of things that can be done. Uh, but they're not things that can be done by the city. So either we, we take responsibility for the mosquitoes, or we put that responsibility back on the, on the back of the citizens. And that's, that's really the only option we have, we don't have an option for us to do anything globally, but, but, but the citizens individually can have an impact. And that would require lots of education and outreach, and impossible sourcing of different, different things they could do, you know, products maybe that we can make available to them. We spend about, if you add in the, the, the man-hours and the chemical and the, and the gasoline and all that, you know, we're spending about five thousand dollars every summer to treat mosquitoes. And could we use that same five thousand dollars in a way that would be more beneficial to the, to the environment, but also allow us to control the mosquitoes to a level that's acceptable? You know, there's, there's certain, there's certain personal responsibility here, you know? If you're gonna go out in the evening, put on mug spray, you know, it's, it's a simple thing. But, um, but for a lot of people, they just want us to deal with it for them, they don't wanna deal with it. But there are side effects to that, and, uh, and we're getting some blowback from the community now, um, about the, the impact it's having on the pollinators. And as y'all know, if we don't have bees, we don't have food. So, you know, it's more than, it's about more than just, you know, just inconvenience, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's, it can have an impact, so. It's something we need to look into, Caitlin has been tasked with coming up with some, some, an alternative plan for us, where we could budget it, you know, and is there a five thousand dollars worth of outreach and, and things? Could, could we work with the school districts and the science departments to try to, to educate and maybe, and maybe even to distribute some sort of mosquito control methods, like, they, they make these buckets that you can put in your yard that have the chemical, not a chemical, but a, a biological item that, you know, it encourages the mosquitoes to breed in these buckets, and then the, the larvae never develop, so. I mean, there's things we could do that way, but, but Caitlin has been tasked with that, we're, we're taking this seriously, I promise you we are. But we've got to come up with an alternative that will work. I mean, just outreach won't work if the, if, if our community won't take the initiative to do those things. You know, you know, that puts responsibility back on our citizens rather than on us, you know, but, but that may be the only option we have, other than spraying.
You mentioned that we spray every, use them every May, didn't we have a schedule that we spray every hour?
We spray every Tuesday, even, unless weather doesn't permit, and then we'll try to do it another day.
In all the rain, we had too, I mean, that's compound.
And we, and we, we spray, spray from May through, we're, we're getting, we seem to go later. Last year, we went all the way into the end of September, we were still having mosquitoes then last year. But, uh, anyway, it just depends on the, on the, on the season, but, but, uh, we usually begin in May. And this year, we started about the middle of May, and we were having some serious phone calls, I mean, people were mad because we hadn't sprayed yet, and it was mid-May, so.
Yeah, I got one of them.
Anyway, I don't know what the solution is, but we're gonna look for a solution, and we'll report back to you, and, uh, but until then, we're gonna continue spraying.
But, you know, don't think they're serious, they're, they're real issues that we have to deal with our citizens, and it's not, not easy to please them all, for sure. Any, any other comments or questions or input from anyone?
I'm over in Germany.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Appreciate you, brother.
Congratulations.